Welcome, everyone, to the Stanley County Board of Commissioners meeting. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order of February 19th at 7:00 PM. Welcome Sheriff George Burris, thank you for coming, Congressman Hudson, thank you for being here. If you will bow with us as Commissioner Eifert leads us in invocation and then stand with us for the pledge.
Let us pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we humbly come to you tonight, thanking you again for this day. Lord, I continue to pray for the victims in Florida, the school shooting. Lord, I pray that you'll be with their families as they're suffering through this terrible tragedy. Lord, I pray that you'll be with the fire, the EMS, the emergency workers, the first responders, Lord, as they go in to protect us daily. Lord, I pray that for our students across this nation, that they should just go to school and worry about being kids rather than worry about being victims. Lord, I continue to pray for our military and their families, for the sacrifices that they do. Lord, I pray for this board, and I pray for wisdom, pray for strength, that we make decisions for the great people of Stanley County. These things I ask in your precious name, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Eifert. Everyone has the agenda in front of them. Does anyone have any amendments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve as presented.
We've got a motion to approve the agenda as presented from Vice Chairman McIntyre, second from Commissioner Morgan. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Agenda carries seven to zero. Thank you, Commissioner. Item one, Concealed Carry Reciprocity Act of 2017. Welcome Congressman Hudson. I'll let you take the podium if you'd like to talk to us for a minute and then we'll all come down front if that's okay.
That's great, Mr. Chairman, thank you. It's an honor to be here with you. I can tell you the people of Stanley County are blessed with strong leadership here on this Board of Commissioners, and I just want to thank you for the stand you've taken on this issue, one of common sense and one that's really important for protecting our constitutional rights. You know, it's particularly important to have very thoughtful leaders at a time like this when, as was referenced in the opening prayer, the tragic shooting in Florida recently. You know, we all struggle with how do we stop school shootings? How do we stop this kind of mass violence? And, you know, it's a complicated issue, and it deserves a very thoughtful response. And it's an issue I've been working on for a number of years now, trying to look at mental health, try to look at what kind of resources are out there to intervene with folks who are in crisis. You know, it requires us to ask questions. How did this happen? How did this individual in Florida slip through the cracks of law enforcement, of mental health, of social workers? You know, it's someone who, it's been reported, the students of the school used to joke that this individual may shoot up the school one day. If the kids knew about it, then we should have all known about it. If this is an individual who was banned from campus with backpacks, certainly folks knew there was a problem here, yet there wasn't the type of intervention that was necessary. There's been reports that a month out, the FBI was notified that this individual was thinking about doing this shooting. How did this individual fall through those law enforcement cracks? These are questions that we need to ask. And we need to ask, what are the resources available? What are the things that the federal government could be doing better? What are the things that state government could be doing better? What are the things that local government should be looking at? And I'm just really appreciative that we've got the kind of leadership in this county that we do, that's willing to look at these questions in a complex way. It's not as simple as let's pass one resolution or one bill. It's also not as simple as let's take away the rights of law-abiding citizens. It's much more complicated than that, and I appreciate that you understand that, and I pledge to work with you. And I just thank you for taking the strong stand you have with this resolution, and I accept it. Thank you.
Thank you Congressman Hudson. We really appreciate the hard work you're doing in Washington for us. If it's okay, I'll read this, and then I think some of us would like to come down and present you with a copy of it.
Great.
Resolution of support for HR 38, Concealed Carry Reciprocity Act of 2017. Whereas HR 38, Concealed Carry Reciprocity Act, was introduced in the United States House of Representatives on January 3rd, 2017, by Representative Richard Hudson. And whereas the Concealed Carry Reciprocity Act was passed by the House of Representatives in bipartisan fashion on December 6th, 2017. And whereas HR 38 allows for law-abiding permitted citizens to travel the country with a means of personal protection without the fear of violating state laws in accordance with the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution. And whereas concealed carry permit holders are among the most law-abiding citizens in this country. And whereas the Stanley County Board of Commissioners are responsible for promoting the safety and well-being of the citizens of Stanley County. Now therefore be it resolved. The Stanley County Board of Commissioners expresses its support of the Concealed Carry Reciprocity Act in hopes of the bill soon becoming law. And be it further resolved, the Stanley County Board of Commissioners direct staff to share copies of this resolution upon adoption with each member of the North Carolina Federal Legislative Delegation, adopted this 16th day of January, 2018. Everyone going us down front? Presenter Dolly Clayton, DSS Director and Assistant Health and Human Services Director. Welcome, Dolly.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
So I've come to you tonight to ask you to please consider making March 2018 Social Work Month, and we recognize it as a community. Social Work Month in March, it's important for us as a community to recognize the work that social workers do, and the fact that they are strong advocates, champions, and leaders, and that's more important than ever in this day and time. Our social workers are trained to look at situations in a holistic way. They're able to bring people together in their communities and find ways to help individuals, groups, and families to address societal problems such as hunger, affordable housing, equal rights for all, and making organizations accountable. The 2018 Social Work Month theme is social workers, leaders, advocates, and champions. And this will inform the public about the past and present role that social workers have played in helping the most vulnerable of our population, as well as their role in improving the lives of all Americans. So I would like to read to you the Social Work Month proclamation that I'm requesting that you sign off on tonight. Whereas the social work profession is dedicated to enhancing the well-being of others and meeting the basic needs of all people, especially the most vulnerable in our society. Whereas social workers embody this year's social work theme, social workers, leaders, advocates, and champions. Whereas thousands of child, family, and school social workers across the country provide assistance to protect children and improve the social and psychological functioning of children and their families. And whereas social workers work with older adults and their families to improve the quality of life and ability to live independently and maintain access to quality mental health and healthcare. And whereas social workers are the largest group of mental health care providers in the United States and work daily to help people overcome depression, anxiety, substance abuse, and other disorders so that they can lead more fulfilling lives. And whereas social workers work in all areas of society to improve happiness, health, and prosperity, including in government, schools, university, social service agencies, communities, the military, and mental health and healthcare facilities. And whereas social workers are present in our times of crisis, helping people overcome issues such as death and grief, and helping people and communities to recover from natural disasters such as floods and hurricanes. And whereas social workers have helped this nation to live up to its ideals by assisting others and successfully pushing for equal rights for all regardless of gender, race, ethnic background, disability, sexual orientation, and other various ethnic, cultural, and religious affiliations. And whereas the social work profession have helped bring about some of the most profound and positive changes in our society over the past century, including voting rights, improved workplace safety, minimum wage, and social safety net programs that help prevent poverty and hunger. And whereas social workers continue to engage and bring together individuals, communities, agencies, and government to help society solve some of the most pressing issues of the day, including immigration reform, equal rights for all, affordable and good healthcare and mental healthcare for all, and protecting the environment. Whereas Stanley County Board of Commissioners joins the Stanley County Consolidated Human Services Board and the National Association of Social Workers and other interested agencies and organizations in recognizing the impact that social work has had on strengthening communities across our state. Now therefore, in recognition of the numerous contributions made by Stanley County social workers, we, the Stanley County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2018 as Social Work Month, and call upon our residents to observe the month by celebrating and supporting social workers and the social work profession. So I just want to make mention, we currently have about 27 social workers in our Department of Social Services. We have two social workers in our Health Department, and we have one social worker that is in our Senior Services Department. So we're going to recognize those members of our Stanley County staff, as well as the other social workers that are in our community making it better.
Thank you, Dolly. Any Commissioners have any questions, Ms. Clayton, or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Swain.
I make a motion to accept the proclamation presented and declare March 2018 Social Work Month.
I've got a motion to accept the proclamation and declare March 2018 Social Workers Month, Social Work Month, second by Vice Chairman McIntyre. Any other discussion, comments? All those in favor, please.
Just a comment. Please tell your staff that we do appreciate what they do, and we know it's very important to help to our community.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Okay, item number three, Economic Development Public Hearing for a Proposed Economic Incentive Agreement. Presenter Michael Smith, our Economic Development Commission Director. Good evening, Michael.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Board of Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be with you all tonight. On behalf of the Stanley County Economic Development Commission, I come before you to request the approval of a five-year business development grant between Stanley County and an unnamed new manufacturing operation. This grant will aid and encourage building renovation and new taxable investment in Stanley County. This company will invest more than $2.5 million and create 50 new full-time jobs. The agreement will be funded with general fund revenues. The county will recover the cost from new tax revenue, and the public will benefit from the additional new property, business, and sales tax revenue, and overall stimulation of the economy and expanded employment opportunities in Stanley County. We appreciate your consideration of this request of support for a new company in our community. I'm happy to answer any questions you all have.
Thank you, Michael. Any questions, comments, or commissioners? All right, I will, we've got to hold a public hearing, so I will declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against this economic development incentive grant? Would you like to speak for or against this?
I just wonder, I've been here four years and I've seen a lot of...
If you would, come on up to the podium and microphone. You will state your name and where you're from and...
Chairman, members of the board, this is not why I came tonight, but my name's Mike Upchurch, live here in Alamoore, been here for about five years, moved from Charlotte. I've seen and read in the papers and just talked to people, we seem to have a lot of people saying they're coming, and then all of a sudden, two, three months down the road, nobody comes. And I just wonder, is this a done deal? That this company's gonna come? That's all I have, you know, I'm not for it or against it. I'm actually for it, if they'll come.
Michael, would you like to address this gentleman's questions?
Sure. We are, and continue to be engaged in conversation with this company, and we expect them to be here, but it is not a done deal yet. But we, I can promise you, within the next month, we will know for sure. One way or another.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, I'd just reiterate, we're doing everything we can to try to bring jobs and industry and good quality jobs to this county, so appreciate your question, your concern. Is there any other questions, anyone wishing to speak for or against this grant? See none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Eifert.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve the 75% property tax incentive grant for a period of five years, and that be associated with the investment of $2.567 million and the creation of at least 50 new jobs, sir.
Second. I've got a motion from Commissioner Eifert and a second from Commissioner Lohan. Anyone have any other questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. All right, next item, utilities. Presenter Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and subbing in for Donna, who was under the weather today and was at the doctor, so I'll do my best to try to answer any questions that may arise out of this item. Basically setting up a project ordinance and budget amendment for the Palestine pump station renovation. This will include $500,000 grant that the county was able to secure from Golden Leaf Foundation, as well as reapropriation of some USDA grant funds from the Greater Baden Phase A project. And then we're working to try to reallocate some of the funds that were committed to us from the state for a drinking water, clean water drinking fund, and for the balance of that, 728. And if that doesn't prove to work out, then we will seek funding from a local financial institution via loan to make up the balance of that. And so we're wanting to get the project ordinance set up so that we can begin the engineering, or finalize the engineering of this project and get construction documents and get it out to bid in a timely manner, so we'd like your consideration this evening. I'd be more happy to answer your questions. I believe the board's been briefed about this project in the past, so hopefully you're familiar with the Palestine pump station.
Thank you, Mr. County Manager. Any questions from the board? I've got, I've got one, and I've asked this question before, but just so that we've got it on record again. Andy, the loan proceeds from, I guess, Part B of the Greater Baden Water and Sewer Loan, that we could potentially use those loan funds, that was a 0% interest loan, correct?
That's correct, and we actually paid the closing cost for the full amount of that loan to the state, but we're not actually going to need all of the loan that was allocated, so we've asked the state to allow us to redirect some of those funds to, or those loan funds to the Greater, the Palestine Pump Station project, due to the fact that without the Palestine Pump Station, there isn't a Greater Baden Water and Sewer District. That's where all their water comes through, so, and the USDA, they allowed that to happen. So far, we haven't been able to get the folks at DEQ to understand that logic and work with us, and I know there's a lot of strings attached to that and precedent and those kinds of things. I do know that Representative Burr has been diligently trying to assist us with maybe getting them to see it a little differently, so we'll see and we'll continue to work that angle, and if not, we'll either reapply for funds or we'll seek a loan from a local financial institution.
Thank you. So the difference on that 728 would be the difference between a 0% interest loan and a 3% interest loan or something?
That's correct. That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, a question for County Manager Andy Lucas. If the funds are not allowed to be used, and you have to seek a local bank loan, will that come back before the board for approval?
Yeah, I mean, it would come back to, for approval for, we'll have, we'll seek bids, and so it'll be based on whoever can give us the lowest interest, but yeah, I mean, it'll come back to the board.
Any other questions for County Manager or anyone else? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lohan.
I'll make a motion and we approve the project ordinance and the associated budget amendment, and a second from Commissioner Swain. Any other discussion?
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. All right, item five, discussion related to changing the time of the Board of County Commissioners' regular meetings. Presenter Vice Chairman McIntyre.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and this is a continuation of a brief conversation we had about this at our retreat last Friday, I guess it was, Friday a week ago. And for some time, I've advocated that maybe we could start our meetings a little earlier. Staff wouldn't have to rush home at 5:00 and try to deal with their kids and their husbands or wives and have dinner and rush back to get here at 7:00. And we could get out at a better hour to solve that problem. And I would like to make a motion tonight that, and I have asked our County Manager, Andy Lucas, about this prior to even discussing it at the retreat, and he said, "I think staff would love this." So I'll just put that in before I make my motion, that we change our regular meeting time from 7:00 until 6:00. On those meeting days, nights that we have closed session items, that we actually meet at 5:30 that day and finish our business in closed session by 6:00. Should it take longer, we can go back later. So my motion is to change our meeting time from 7:00 to 6:00, except on the days that we have closed session items, that we would start at 5:30.
Does everyone understand the motion from Vice Chairman McIntyre? Do we have a second? I've got a second from, motion from Vice Chairman McIntyre, second from Commissioner Eifert. Any comments, questions, discussion from the board?
I just, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Swain.
I just kind of feel like if we're gonna say 5:30 for closed session, we just say 5:30 to start the whole thing. I mean, that's my personal opinion, but I just, I think it's just more effective, because nine times out of 10, we have a closed session. In the last year, I've been to one meeting that didn't have a closed session, if I remember correctly.
I've got Commissioner Lotters to speak.
Yeah. The only thing about 5:30 is if we have a public hearing or we have something going on, and we do have a lot of citizens that live and work, live in Stanley County and work outside the county, I think, you know, we, I think we need to consider their time in traveling to come to be before the board. Any public comment or any input?
That was kind of my reasoning behind meeting at 6:00 rather than at 5:30. So if we do have a closed session item and we meet at 5:30, then those that want to come for a public hearing or something later in the agenda, they would be able to get here by 6:00 maybe, but...
Got a comment from County Manager. They mentioned if we put it at 6:00, we could always come in at 5:30 and have a business meeting, make sure. I know a lot of us come in early and ask the attorney or County Manager a question that they've got about the packet, you know, they're not understanding something, or making sure they're on the same page, so potentially we could kind of set it for us to come in at 5:30, and if we have a closed session item, deal with it, and I think that's his point, that he was trying to get over to me. Am I correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. You just basically set your business meeting from this point forward at 5:30, and then if there's a closed session, you can include that as part of that business meeting, and then you could resume that after your regular meeting ends, which would start all the time at 6:00. And so I think that's a way of dealing with it, is you have a business meeting at 5:30, set established time, and then a regular meeting that starts at 6:00.
Have no problem with my motion being amended to say that.
I'm in agreeance with Commissioner Lotters. I think it gives people time. That was my only hindrance in changing the time, is even though a lot of our meetings may not be packed, so we do have those times when they are, and you've got to give people who work, because some people work in Charlotte or anywhere else, that gives them time to get here.
Give them time to cross Bear Creek.
Any other, any other comments, or does that answer your questions, Commissioner Swain?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. My understanding, the motion is that our meeting time will be changed to 6:00 PM, and anytime that we would have a closed session item, we would start the meeting at 5:30 to take up closed session, and we would... Okay. Vice Chairman McIntyre, correct me.
All the meetings, we will meet as a board at 5:30, every meeting. And from 5:30 to 6:00 will be either closed session or just a business meeting that we sit around and discuss. As you were saying, you know, might want to ask the attorney or something, County Manager, just a kind of a business meeting for 30 minutes. Our regular agenda will start at 6:00.
And County Manager further elaborated on that, that that 5:30 meeting, as long as it was not a closed session meeting, press would be allowed to be in that section. So that would be, I guess, the public to the press. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Does everyone understand the motion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. All right, item six, consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the board? Got a motion from Commissioner Lohan, second by Vice Chairman McIntyre. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. All right, public comments. Mr. Upchurch, I have you down for a public comment. Would you like to further speak to us? So come on up. Welcome.
Thank you.
There were about three things I wanted to talk about. One was the jobs, which Michael kind of took care of. I've been surprised that, like I said before, that so many people, companies have said they're coming here. It's been in print, and then all of a sudden, you know, two months later, they're not coming. You know, it seems like all we're getting is fast food restaurants, you know, and that's one comment. Second one is retirement homes. I know there's one retirement home here in this area, and there's a waiting list for that. Someone told me that it's a year waiting list. My wife just passed away this Christmas. I told her I would go to one, but I'll either have to go to Charlotte or to Concord. I'm from Charlotte, 65 years there, but I really love it up here. You know, nice town, clean town, stores are clean, people are nice. I have not run into anybody that's been mean or belligerent, and that's great. But I'd like to stay here, but there are no apartments. I make $100 too much to qualify for any of the apartments around here, or housing. There's no retirement homes, except for the one that someone told me about, and he said the list was a year's wait, at least. So I don't understand why the county doesn't have more than one retirement home. Not assisted, nothing like that. And that's it, you know. I appreciate y'all hearing me.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Upchurch. Thanks for coming to speak to us. I will just say, I guess, my thoughts on that, I know that we do have an aging population, and that may be something we need to reach out to some folks, companies that have retirement homes that do that, and see what their level of interest would be here in the county. Any other public comments? Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, board comments. Commissioner Morgan, I'll let you start us off.
Just congratulate Mr. Loh, Commissioner Lohan, on his appointment to be in Treasurer of COG at the last meeting. We know where to go for the money now. Other than that, thoughts and prayers are with the people in South Florida, and that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Lohan.
In response to retirement homes, I'm, come from my recollection. Spring Arbor, I think, is a retirement center. Taylor House is a Baptist retirement home, and I'm trying to think of others in the county. But I think there's two that I'm aware of. And that, we are living in a county that has aging population. I think we have very good nursing facilities, and the two retirement homes that I mentioned are good. But those are things that we do need to plan for if we can get an investor to invest in something of that nature. The other thing that I want to report on was Ashley, Commissioner Morgan, and I attended the kickoff of the 50th anniversary for Central Island Council of Government. Our county is a member of that, along with the city of Alamoor, Baden, Norwood, lots of our municipalities are members. And it's taken me a while to understand everything that they work toward, and I don't understand everything, but I do know that our, I'm gonna call it mills on wheels, or mills that are provided through the senior center. Funding comes through Central Island Council of Government. Another item that they support, the, and I call them Job Link Center, a lot of people used to call them unemployment offices, I'm not sure what, Career Centers now, I think is what they're called. I think they were gonna close the one here in Stanley County, but COG pays to keep that one open. We do receive quite a few benefits from councils of governments. And I'm just sharing a couple of those with you. And I think Ashley probably learned some things at the meeting, they had a, an hour overview of what all the COG does. And I do think it's important that we maintain our membership with COG and continue to support them as they support us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lohan. Vice Chairman McIntyre.
No comments, sir.
You, Commissioner Lauter. Thank you. Commissioner Eford.
Yes, I got one, Mr. Chairman. Tomorrow, the senior center will be doing a survey, and I know Ms. Bennett's out there, and I don't think I'm quite as excited as she is about surveys, but I do my best. It's time to, you let your voice be heard. If you're a senior, they will be out at the Joel Honeycutt Room in Locust tomorrow from 9:00 till 11:00, and they will be in Norwood, I think at Norwood Town Hall from 2:00 to 4:00. This is a time for the seniors out there to, I'm sorry, Community Center in Norwood, I'm sorry. A time for the seniors' voice to be heard on whether to expand the senior center that we have here, start another one, more programming, but if you don't get to those two locations, you can also go on the senior center website, and you can take that survey there. So I would just continue with our senior theme for tonight, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Eford. Commissioner Swain.
No comment this evening, Mr. Chairman.
All right, it comes to me. I'm gonna read you guys a letter, really quick. This is a thank you letter. Thank you not just once or twice, but thanks a bunch for being so nice. Thank you kindly for recognizing my retirement at the recent Stanley County Board of Commissioners meeting. I greatly appreciate the gift that I received. I have enjoyed serving our community for the past 20 years. I look forward to the next chapter in my life. Thank you again, Teresa Sides. That was very nice of Ms. Sides. We recognized her, I believe, at the last meeting or the one before. I would just like to say, my thoughts and prayers are certainly with the folks in Florida. And something's kind of been on my mind the last several days. I've read some comments on social media that thoughts and prayers don't do anything, but I disagree with that. Thoughts and prayers, certainly prayers go a long way, and my prayers are with those folks. Having said that, we're, we have a closed session item to discuss a personnel issue in accordance with General Statute 143-318 dot 11A6, and to also discuss an economic development commission issue in accordance with General Statute 143-318 dot 11A4.
Chairman.
Vice Chairman McIntyre.
Make a motion to recess this meeting, go into closed session for those numbers you just read.
Got a motion to go into closed session. Do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Lohan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in closed session.